All right, good evening. I'm Myren Bailey, the Mayor Cottage Grove. I'm calling the Cottage Grove City Council meeting to order for April 7, 2021. Before we do move to the Pledge of Allegiance and the rest of the meeting, I do have a statement to read. So again, tonight, the City Council meeting is in person, with the exception that we have Councilmember Loray Mills, who will be remotely, in remote this evening. The council chambers are set up to ensure adequate and necessary social distancing. Because of the reduced capacity of our council chambers, and recognizing some residents will be more comfortable attending the meeting virtually, we continue to provide for public input via Zoom. Please visit our website at cottagegrovemn.gov, hover over the Your Government drop-down menu, then pick on Public Meetings, where you will find instructions for additional viewing and participation options for tonight's meeting. We want to be transparent, accessible, and inclusive, and we hope these measures will accommodate everyone who wishes to participate in our open and public meetings. So with that, I will move then to, since I called the meeting to order, to the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. Whether you do it in person here, which I don't believe we have anybody signed up out there, but I, oh, do you want to speak tonight? Okay. So we do have one person in the audience, we'll do them first, and then I believe we have one or two people that I'm aware of that are online, and so I will open that up here in a minute, so we'll start with Mr. Butt. And before Mr. Butt says his name and address for the record, I just want to remind everybody that, and with open forum too, it is no more than three minutes, so thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Wayne Butt, owner of Historic Ferber Farm at 7310 Lamar Avenue South Cottage Grove here. I'm just, I, short notice, and I've been asking for the minutes from the ACHP meeting that was held back in February in reference to the Cedarhurst Mansion Development Project, and I just want to, for the record, state that I'm closely watching the history of Cottage Grove and anything that we decide to do as a whole for the city of, and community of Cottage Grove, that the historic presence there maintains, and we continue thriving into the future with historic properties. My wife Angie and I own two historic properties at this time. It's the Historic Ferber, John P. Ferber Home, and the Historic Dr. Arthur Steen Home out in Old Cottage Grove. Cedarhurst Mansion isn't in Old Cottage Grove, but it has that, that history presence to it, and it's sitting on 10 acres, and I'm really curious, without seeing the minutes, as to what tonight's workshop looks like, so I'm here for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I believe if I'm gonna start this, I see John Stetchcon. John, would you like to speak before the council at this point?
Yes, if I may.
And if John, yes, I can hear you, John, and if you're able to state your address for the record, please.
John Stetchcon, 9263 Military Road Cottage Grove. And at last week, or the last City Council meeting, Councilmember Thede brought up military road closure and using Jensen as the only access for the 120 homes in Ravine Parkway, going through Ravine Meadows. Now, that road is very skinny, and the city engineer says, oh, it will only be a problem when there's events. In other words, if somebody's parking on the street. Then, during the meeting, another council member, he's more worried about parking space with, in front of his business, instead of road width. You know, I don't see how the council can close down Military Road in the future and make everybody go through Ravine Meadows. Them 26 homes are not aware of what's coming their way. So the flow of traffic, you guys don't look at the future. I know the council member that owns the business didn't like, he was losing business because you couldn't turn left on 70th Street, leaving his business, and he sure was able to get that change. So I really would like to see the City Council look at their future plans, the road widths, you know, if you go up to Lennar Homes in Woodbury off of 70th Street, and look at their access into that development, they have a nice road with no driveways on their main road going in. So I, I, I don't understand the council here worried about parking space width and not the width on our ma- major roads going into developments.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, John, and just so you know, what, when we do these things on open forum, we allow staff to kind of gather the information, and then we will send you a letter, or contact you, one way or the other, and let you know what, what the decisions are, and, and from a planning standpoint and that, so thank you for sharing your concerns.
Yeah, I know, I don't expect too much with this council, but thanks for the time.
Okay, thank you, John. Now, I do see a couple other people on here, I just want to open it up, is there somebody else that would like to speak on open forum? Anybody at all? Okay. I will go ahead then, and I'm gonna close open forum at this point, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda?
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Roll call vote, Joe.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. We'll move on, number six is presentations, there are none this evening. Seven is consent calendar, is there anything council would like to poll on this evening's consent calendar for just, for the discussion? All right, seeing none?
Move consent.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Joe, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. So if you're here or listening for anything that's on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Moving on, quickly here actually, eight is approved disperspence, eight A is pay the bills.
Move the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Olson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any discussion? Again, roll call, Joe.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Next is nine is public hearings, there is none this evening. Ten is bid awards, we do have two bid awards this evening. The first one is the 2021 Pavement Management Bid Awards, and our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, is gonna walk us through this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So first bid award to talk about is 2021 Pavement Management. We opened bids for this project on March 25th. We received five bids, which is pretty typical for this type of project that we have out when we're obtaining those bids. The apparent low bidder for the project was Northwest Asphalt. We did have five alternates for this project, and the reason for that is we had some specific things in Arbor Meadows Park and River Oaks that, you know, depending on how the bids came in, they were things that we would, thought would be good to complete, but we wanted to have some flexibility on what we could award based on the bidding. And looking at those alternates, regardless of what alternates are chosen, Northwest Asphalt remains the low bidder for the project. And staff tonight is recommending awarding alternates one, three, four, and five, not alternate two. Alternate two was a shelter at Arbor Meadows Park, and working with our Parks Department, they have installed those in the past through state contract pricing and getting some quotes for the installation, and can do it at a much lower rate. You can see that one was well above the engineer's estimate. So typically, we like to do the work with the project, that's simpler, but we've looked at how we can do it separate. We don't see any issues with the construction, any complications, and we can really save a lot of money and do it in a more cost-effective manner, just because those alternate two bids were not very favorable. So the recommendation tonight is to award the 2021 Pavement Management Project to Northwest Asphalt for the base bid plus alternates one, three, four, and five. Recommendations on the screen, and I'll stand for questions.
All right, council, any questions at this point? Councilmember Olson?
Two questions. Ryan, will you please go back to the last slide? Thank you. With regard to alternate number two, I can see our, our engineer's estimate is, you know, slightly below what, what the bids were, but for number four, it's like number four bid low. You're recommending one, three, and four, is that correct?
And five.
And five? Okay. So when I look at one, for example, the, the low bidder Northwest Asphalt, you know, bid over the estimate as well. Just curious, you know, can you tell me a little bit more about why we chose not to include number two i- in this? I mean, it looks like we're kind of all over the board with the various bids as it relates to the engineer's estimate for each of the alternates. You know, it doesn't appear as though it's, it's a tremendous leap for number two anyway, and if we were to choose number two, we would probably end up working with bidder number two versus bidder number one, if, if my rough math is accurate, so just walk me through the thought process there, please.
Yep, certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson. When we award a project, we have to award it all to one contractor. So if we were to award alternate two, it would be awarded Northwest Asphalt, they're the low bidder throughout, so it would be awarded at that amount of $77,000. So about 30, $35,000 over the estimate. Working with the Parks Department, we've seen we can do that on our own in-house for about $36,000. So you're looking at a savings of about $41,000 to, to not include it, because it would have to go to Northwest Asphalt, who had the highest amount for that alternate specifically, but across the board, they were the low bidder, so they would be the ones who get the work.
So it's because?
I'm just gonna interject real quick. Actually, item J on our, our consent this evening was the approval of that park shelter at $36,000, so.
Understood. I'm just trying to get the thought process behind why, why we felt we were gonna go that route. And then the second question was, have we worked with Northwest? Are we comfortable with them?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, that's a good question. They have done a lot of work in town, both with the city and with different developments in town, so a lot of experience there, you know, a larger utility, street and utility company, so, yep, they have worked with us in the past, and we've had good results.
And the reason I ask is because, as you know, people get very sensitive when these projects either don't get done in a timely fashion, or perhaps when they are in the midst of completion, there are situations that require a little bit more attention, et cetera, and so of course, I want to be cognizant of who we're working with and make sure that we've, we've actually seen their work previously and been comfortable with it, as opposed to just awarding a little bid to somebody that we may not necessarily know the quality of their work, but it sounds like we're in good shape here.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other council comments on this or questions? Before we move forward, I'll just double check to make sure, was there anybody that's watching online that would have, has a question regarding this bid award? Okay. So seeing none, at this point, council, we do have a, a motion that's before us on the screen, at least on our screen, maybe you can see it, Loray? If someone would like to make the motion.
I will move that we adopt a resolution awarding the 2021 Pavement Management Project to Northwest Asphalt for the base bid plus alternative one, three, four, and five, for a total project cost of $3,354,292.69.
All right, so the motion by Councilmember Thede?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Joe, roll, please.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. And then the second item under bid awards is Summers Landing Fifth Edition Utility Street and Lighting Improvement Project, and Ryan Burfine, you are up again.
Thank you, Mayor. For Summers Landing Fifth Edition, these bids were opened on April 1st, so last Thursday. We got nine bids for this project, and the reason you see more in this project, Pavement Management's really have paving jobs, so it's paving contractors bidding on that. This is a lot of paving and utilities, so you get kind of both contractors that specialize in that to, to bid on this project. We got favorable bid results, the low bid was some R.L. Larson Excavating, $1,387,324, about $300,000 below the engineer's estimate, and there was no alternates for this project, so just the base bid. The recommendation tonight is to award that project to R.L. Larson, and I'll stand for questions.
Again, council, any questions for Ryan on this one? All right, and I'll ask one more time on this item, is there anybody on the, that's watching at home that wants to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion, council.
Mayor, I'll make, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Loray.
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2021-047, awarding the bid for the Summers Landing Fifth Edition Utility Street and Lighting Improvements Project. It's awarded to R.L. Larson Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $1,378,000, oops, $378,324.37.
Lots of numbers there. All right, so we have a motion, motion by Councilmember Mills, did I hear a second, Councilmember Olson? Okay. Any other discussion? Joe, roll call.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Both of those carried, thank you. Next on our agenda is 11, which is regular agenda, there actually isn't any this evening. We're already into council comments or requests, so I'll do my normal and start with Councilmember Mills, anything you would like to add this evening?
Well, I'm remote tonight, but glad I can join you all tonight. Those are the comments I have, so thank you for allowing me to join in this way, and I'll see you at the workshop soon.
You got it, thank you. All right, Councilmember Dennis?
I'm actually good, I'll yield my time to my colleagues.
All right, sounds good. Councilmember Thede?
I'm good.
Councilmember Olson?
Wow, that was quick.
That was quick. We're moving through this meeting here.
Well, let's try to slow things down a little.
There was a council bet over there, or a staff bet over there on how long it's gonna take?
Right, so I've got a couple things I just want to touch on. First and foremost, I want to speak to the comments in open forum that were made with regard to the, the traffic that is going to flow through when military closes. I know that this is a conversation that we've had before, and perhaps Ryan wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium for this one, but, you know, we've looked very closely at traffic flow in that area, and I know that with the narrow roadway that is in place there, it actually lends itself to better traffic control, whereas, you know, where we grew up, you know, on, on the other side of the highway where the roadways are pretty wide, you get a lot of speed, because even if there's cars on both sides of the roadways, there's still so much space that people just kind of fly through there. And it's my understanding that, you know, as per your comments from the last time we talked about this, with the more narrow roadway, we are going to see, you know, much slower speeds, number one, and number two, it's not a collector, so we shouldn't see tremendous traffic volume through that area based on all of the experience of the engineers who actually designed that entire segment of the subdivision. But could you speak to that a little more clearly as an engineer than I could as just a City Councilmember sitting here?
Yep, certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson. So we look at Ravine Meadows, there is homes to the north that will drive through it, and more so once Military Road is removed, but it is kind of, maybe call it a dead-end area, right? We butt up against Woodbury, there may be some local street connections with the city of Woodbury, but no major collector or through road in that area, and that's really when we design a road a little bit wider, our 36-foot instead of 28-foot standard is when it's a collector roadway. And you really want a collector roadway to connect between two major roads, something like Indian Boulevard, right? It goes through the area by Kingston Park from Keats Avenue, Jamaica Avenue, many cars on that road, it's striped and really can handle that. For something like Ravine Meadows, you just won't see that kind of traffic, there's, there's no need for additional capacity, and wider roads really just lend themselves to speed. And that's, that's a study thing, not just in Cottage Grove, that's an actual thing that's studied nationwide, you know, what do road widths do to vehicle speeds? We don't want to design them wider than necessary. There will be other connections to Ravine Parkway as well, to the west, there's a McCady property that's undeveloped right now, that will have additional connections going north-south from, you know, current development down to Ravine Parkway.
Okay, thank you. And then I also want to talk a little bit about sort of the ancillary comments, I'm not sure how one really pertains to the other, but there were some comments made about one of the council members with a business, well, that's pretty easy to figure out, that's Councilmember Dennis, and he's concerned about the amount of parking in his parking lot. Well, I remember that Councilmember Dennis asked us for some consideration around just taking a, a quick look at the actual size of parking spaces, and I believe he was advocating for the potential that there might be additional width in parking spots, because, you know, we're trying to eliminate door dings and make things more comfortable for people, which would actually reduce parking in, in places, it wouldn't increase parking. So one would surmise that if I were going to reduce parking in the parking lot of a business that I own, that would be a bad thing. So I guess I'm not seeing any sort of conflict of interest there, in fact, quite the opposite, but, you know, two plus two sometimes equals five for people, I guess. The other thing is that left-hand turn out of the business area where we've got, you know, Councilmember Dennis' business and Carboni's and all the others, the person who recommended that that left-hand turn actually come back into fashion after the county redid that road and put in, I believe they call it a pork chop, that was gonna limit the left-hand turn, that person was me, I'm the one who asked for that. It certainly wasn't anybody else on the council, and the reason I asked for that is because many of the business owners, and frankly, many of the residents of the city who shop in that area, were perplexed as to why they took away a left-hand turn when it was clearly a safe intersection for people to have enough time to react to the cars coming up from around the roundabout to make a left without creating any sort of, you know, extra dangerous situation. So, you know, I apologize that, that my colleague got kind of targeted on both of those things, but I think that was inappropriate, and I just wanted to set the record straight about that left-hand turn, that that was, that was me who asked for that. So, anyway, moving on, I also wanted to just remind the public of a couple of things. First of all, I believe, Ryan, next week, you've got your team that will be out doing hydrant flushing, once the street sweeping is done. And of course, that's the time of year when we go around and we open up all the hydrants and when we try to flush those out, and people will see that their water in their homes might change color. So I just want to give people a heads up that if you see that, the best thing you can do is just let your tap run for a period of time, and the water will ultimately clear itself up. But what happens is when we flush those hydrants, any of the sediment that has settled over the course of the last few months in the wintertime, that gets stirred up a little bit. Doesn't mean the water's unsafe to drink, it doesn't create any sort of health issue or anything like that, but it will be discolored for a period of time. So I just want people to be aware that if they run their tap, they'll be perfectly fine. You know, if you do that, and, and you continue to have discoloration, certainly let us know and we'll take a look at it, but it's a very normal thing. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about is, you know, I've had a lot of residents reach out recently, and by a lot, you know, I'm, I'm not talking hundreds, I'm talking, you know, seven, eight residents, who have asked for some consideration around our ordinances as it relates to backyard hens. Now, I know that this is a topic that our council has studied previously, it's, it's been a few years, and I believe there are some communities that, that have looked at this more recently than we have and potentially changed some things, so I thought it made some sense, since we're kind of going through our entire book of ordinances, where we're looking at, you know, pretty much everything under the sun, if as part of that process, maybe we could once again just revisit this, this topic and find out from our friends at the League of Minnesota Cities and our friends at Metro Cities. and find out from our friends at the League of Minnesota Cities and our friends at Metro Cities, which Mayor Bailey is actually the president of, what other communities have been doing, what has been the evolution of this conversation? And then have there been any ordinance changes? If indeed there have been ordinance changes, what ramifications have there been to those ordinance changes? And again, I'm not advocating either way. All I'm asking is, can we just look at it? I'd be curious to get some more insight, some more information. So obviously, that's something that the council as a whole probably needs to vote on. So I would just ask my colleagues for some consideration around having the staff do a little bit of work as they're working through the ordinance book to take a peek at what other folks have been doing and whether that makes sense for us or not.
So I'm assuming, councilmember Olson, you want to make that as a motion?
Sure.
Okay. To ask staff. I know staff has been aware, because we've talked a little bit.
Yes, yeah.
So I have a motion then.
Second.
And second by councilmember Dennis. Any other discussions at this point? Councilmember Thede?
You mentioned about, just about chickens. Should we, we basically open that up as to, you know, animals? What was your motion? Was it just chickens?
I'm not hearing about any other animals other than hens, not even roosters, just hens.
I heard ducks.
Yeah.
Heard ducks.
Sure, so I'll defer to...
You know, the little, the, the...
Potbelly.
Puddly pigs, yeah, whatever they are.
Yeah, I'll defer to the staff with their expertise, because I know the last time we looked at this, we looked at all sorts of different iterations of what people might consider to be a pet. You know, I know that we dug into that pretty deeply, but what I'm hearing about is hens, and if ducks is something that you're hearing about as well, certainly I'd be willing to add that to the motion. Again, I'm just looking for information. That's all I want.
Okay. Is that it? Good?
Yeah, if we kind of open it up, I would...
We'll let, we'll let staff kind of take it then, if everybody's good by that. So Joe, do you want to do the official roll, please?
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries.
That's it.
That's it for you? All right, so I have a couple of items for the, for the staff, well, for staff a little bit, but also for council and the public. One is, and I thought maybe councilmember Olson was heading down this path a little bit, had to do with, there's a lot of events that are starting to open up again as more and more people are getting COVID shots and so on. And there's three events that we've done in the past through Public Works that we're able to do again this year, at least in some way, shape, or form. The first one is on April 16th, the City of Cottage Grove would be doing a Arbor Day tree giveaway. Boy, that was a little tongue twister there. And sign up actually begins, so, and basically what it is, the first 125 people that sign up will have trees delivered to them by April 30th. And Ryan, I don't know, do you want to walk up to the front? Do you know what those trees are? And where they need to, who they need to contact in order to get the trees?
Did you say the 16th?
Yes. Yep.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. So what we do, and it was really popular, they went really quick last year. We did some posts to the different, you know, our Facebook site, on the city website. And we post that two weeks ahead of Arbor Day, so April 16th. And then on April 30th is when we deliver the trees. It's a bearwood tree. There's a few different species, and it's a big, it's a big bearwood tree. I think they're five to six feet tall, so. And then, like I said, instead of more of that group event, like we would like to get back to, we're going to do this for one more year. It was really popular last year. I think they sold out in about two hours. So once you see the posts come out, you got to do it pretty quick, because then they go quick, so.
Yeah, and so you might want to stay there for a quick sec. So it says that you can start the sign up at nine o'clock that morning, so just wanted to make that.
And there'll be a link on our website to a Google document where people can sign up, and it'll automatically cut off at 125, so you don't have any disappointed folks that they didn't get the tree, so.
Perfect. And then the other item, just because I did have, matter of fact, our senator called me on this one, you know, is we are doing a buckthorn pickup once again this year on April 28th and 29th. And obviously, that'll be happening throughout the city, and if you are going to be cleaning out buckthorn in your particular area or yard or whatever, you will have the opportunity to have Public Works come pick that up, but you do need to sign up at Public Works. Is that correct? Or sign up online? Okay. And then lastly, from a Public Works standpoint, is on May 1st, which I was excited to see this, we do have our citywide cleanup event, and I do believe at our next meeting you are going to be, or somebody is going to be doing a presentation, just as a friendly reminder. But this will be from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM down at the Public Works Garage. We'll share more information at our next meeting, but as you are all starting to get out in your yards and garages and such, and since we've all been hermiting in for the last year, looking at things to get rid of, this will be your opportunity to clean out some of the debris and things that you might have been keeping for a while, and City of Cottage Grove will help get, take that off your hands.
Yep, definitely.
Fantastic. All right, the other item I did want to bring up to council, and I don't know if, do we have any pictures of that or no, with the banner? Okay. So council, what I am going to ask, as we did earlier with councilmember Olson, as you're all aware, this last year, would be two years ago, so 20, in the year of 2019, 2020, we ended up doing banners for our, generic banners, if you will, for the seniors for... It was, the city of, I have to say this because it was important. It's the City of Cottage Grove color of green. I did have some people from East Ridge say, hey, why is it all green instead of East Ridge colors? Well, it's the city's green, and it's a celebration of our seniors that are going to be graduating. We did it last year, and we did have a particular business that stepped up and provided the funding for that. And what we do is, we do put congratulations to our 2021 seniors on some of the banners that go down 80th Street. What I'm asking for council for approval this evening is that we get to do that at least one more year here, and I say that just because we are still under the COVID. And the cost, I believe, is just over $2,000. I believe it's a little...
$2,400.
Yeah, $2,400. And it will provide us with about 35 to 40 banners in that range. And then what we do, what we'll do with those banners, once we're finished with them, like we did last time, that was very well-received, is we will take drawings and let any of the senior families that, and seniors that want those banners, first come, first served, that they can actually take those banners with them once, once the season is over. And so what I'm asking for council versus going out to businesses and requesting funding from them, I did talk with our city administrator, and for the cost, it's very minimal. We definitely have the opportunity to do that from a city standpoint. And at least this year, I would ask for your consideration to approve purchasing those banners and directing staff to do that. So at least in my case, I'd like to make the motion on approving the banners for the costs that the city would provide. And I'll, was that you, councilmember Olson? Okay, so we have a second by councilmember Olson. Any other conversation? Yeah, councilmember Thede?
So the one concern that I potentially had, number one, is actually starting a precedent. But, you know, if we did it this year, are we going to have to do it every year? Now, I know what you said, and let me ask one more, make one more point. Do we know for a fact that people can't have graduation parties? And there's not going to be an onsite graduation ceremony this year?
We, well, the grad parties, I have no idea at this point. I do know I've gotten invites on Facebook from people that are planning to have grad parties. I'm not sure I've heard anything from the school district yet as it relates to a graduation ceremony. To answer your other question, though, I would, I would assume that in the future, if the decision was made that they wanted to do banners in the future, we'd go back out to the business community and ask them to participate. And that would be my take on it, only because, you know, most of our businesses, or businesses in general, had a tough year this last year coming through COVID. And that is my only reason for not really going back out to the business community and asking. We ask a lot of our business community, and they've been through a tough year. I don't want to go back out and ask, and we have the ability to do it, and that's why I did it this year. Is that answer? Councilmember Dennis?
All right, thanks, Mayor. I think it's a kindly thing to do. Again, we're still in a tough time, and, you know, I'm not too worried about a precedent. I mean, councils will do as councils will do. It still takes three votes, but in this case, I think it's a good thing to do and provide a little bit of an uplift for people, so I support.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comments, I will go ahead and ask Joe to do the roll.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. And then the only last thing I did want to mention is more of a, just kind of a heads up for the public. I know, as we just talked about, all these events that we're hoping to slowly bring back in. One of the events that we're looking at possibly being able to have this year, and I've been talking about their Director of Public Safety specifically, and that is the Fourth of July fireworks at Kingston. We're watching and monitoring what's going on from a state and federal standpoint on restrictions and such. We believe, hopefully, that at this point, our plan is to move forward with the Fourth of July fireworks, because you have to kind of plan that out in advance. So I just want to let the public know that, and we're working with Public Safety to make sure that it's done in a quote-unquote "safe" manner, so it's not a spreader event or anything like that. Hopefully, by then, most people have been vaccinated or had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And I did also want to make a plug, because the Cottage Grove Lions Club is actually going to be the quote-unquote sponsor. We do have businesses in our community that had, before COVID, had stepped up with financial money for this event. 3M, Reno by Anderson, Tennis Sanitation, Hy-Vee, and I know I'm missing somebody. I'm just losing my mind at the moment.
Steve Hesse.
Steve Hesse.
Taharido.
Yep. So we did have some people that actually did step in, or businesses that did step in, and then we canceled them last year, and all but one of them asked us to hold the money and use it for the future, which is what we're proposing to do this year. So I just want to say thank you to Cottage Grove Lions Club for getting, agreeing to do this, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that we're going to be able to actually get our first city true event out, up and running and kind of move forward from the COVID. So that is it for my comments. The next item on our agenda is a workshop, which is open to the public. It's 3660 Retail Estate Solutions LLC, and it's regarding the Cedarhurst redevelopment proposal. And we will be taking that, I believe, in the training room. Is that correct? And then 14 is the workshop that's closed at the public. There is none this evening, so we won't be adjourning in here for the general public. But I do wish everybody a great evening, and council will move to the training room.